I wonder if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Arndeman Mathie.
Here.
Arndeman Sage.
Here.
Arndeman Malamway.
Here.
Arndeman Burgess.
Here.
Arndeman Pinter.
Here.
Arndeman Schmidt.
Here.
Arndeman Black.
Here.
Arndeman Bray.
Here.
Arndeman Harmon.
Here.
Karen. Here. Thank you very much. Actually, we're going to go ahead and start. Whoops. Excuse me. On our agenda, we're going to go ahead and start with recognitions and appointments. We have a proclamation declaring October 8th through 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week, which would mean we are over one day into that. And I have several people who are walking up to receive this award. If you please come on up. Thanks. And come on up. Come on down. The price might not be right, but I've got a proclamation for you. Okay. Proclamation, Fire Prevention Week, October 8th through 14th, 2017. Whereas the city of Bloomington is committed to ensuring the safety and security of those living in and visiting Bloomington, and whereas fire is a serious public safety threat, excuse me, concern both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at greatest risk from fire, U.S. fire departments responded to 365,500 home fires in 2015 alone, according to the National Fire Prevention Association. And whereas U.S. home fires resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015, representing the majority, 78 percent of all U.S. fire deaths, whereas newer homes are built with lightweight material that burn faster than older home construction, and whereas many of today's products and furnishing produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments, and whereas these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely, with people having as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds, and whereas a home fire escape plan provides a skill set and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation, and whereas a home fire, excuse me, and whereas home fire escape plan should be developed by all members of the household, and whereas practicing a home fire escape plan twice a year ensures that everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation, and whereas Bloomington's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, quote, "Every second counts, Plan Two Ways Out," unquote, effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year, and therefore, I, Terry Renner, Mayor of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim October 8th through the 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week. I urge all people of Bloomington to develop a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year, and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of Bloomington's fire and emergency services throughout Fire Prevention Week 2017. Terry Renner, Mayor of Bloomington. Thank you very much for all you do. Thank you so much. Absolutely. Thank you. I just wanted to take just a second to introduce to you our Public Education Officer, Stuart Blade. I don't know if, he doesn't get the full recognition that I think he deserves, and I know that Karen had an opportunity to participate in one of his classes here recently.
Thank you.
But he is, he just does a tremendous job of getting the message out to our community, and I just wanted to thank him publicly for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you all very much. We're going to shift now to public comment, and we have public comment for up to three minutes per person, and I just want to remind everyone that if you want to have immediate answers or perhaps at least, or perhaps immediate, you know, responses to problems, please come to my mayor's open house. It's 4:30 to 5:30 on Friday. And at this point, I've changed the format slightly. You come into my office, and we had people who came in even after 5:30. If you're going to come over to my office, I'm going to talk to you. I'm not turning anybody away unless the place is locked down by the time I leave. So if you want to come in, I'll talk to you one-on-one. Steve Rasmussen was with me last Friday and was able to solve one of the first problems that came through the door almost immediately. There are some that we can't always solve, but at the very least, you have open access, and you can, we can try to give you as many answers as we can upfront and immediately. In public comment, our policy is that we do not engage in a one-on-one or tit-for-tat. Okay? So essentially, at this point, we're starting at 7:08, and we have a half an hour. There are, I believe, more than 10 people, so please be as expeditious as possible. And you have up to three minutes, and I will read them in groups of three, so please be prepared. Leon Kaeb, K-A-E-B, I apologize if I mispronounced your name, Judy Sterns, and Clayton Matheson. Leon?
Good evening, Council Mayor.
Thank you, Leon.
The only few things I got to feel like that I need to express here. First off, I just, on my mind here, as I sat in listening to Venue Works, I would give support to that. I think for $3,000 a month, that it's a no-brainer, really, considering what has happened in the past. This, I think Venue Works is totally, excuse me, totally different than SIAM, and I think what you see there with Venue Works will be, you'll get your money's worth for $3,000 a month. Next attention that I would like to turn to is Front Street, right at Law &amp; Justice Connect Transit is aware of how the street has been fatiguing down. Asphalt is totally in disarray there. And I, at one time, spoke with Austin Grammar of kind of a proposal that I had in mind for the community. It would involve a front and center property, and I just bring it to the council here. I don't know if it's getting any traction, but what it would be is an investment with the city and Connect Transit to put value into front and center, whether it be raising the building and reengineering for a bus terminal. I think it needs some traction, some thought. The only reason I ring that is because a couple weeks now, there's been some unnecessary rambling with a task force about taking down the parking garage on Market Street. And to me, that's just, it's just unnecessary, completely unnecessary, to destroy a building there that, an edifice or a facility that the city needs so badly for parking, and it really is, it doesn't need to be destroyed. First off, as you well know, that Mark Street is otherwise known as Alcohol Alley, and I think as you put the census together that with a library there and also Connect Transit, you would just exasperate the problem along Market Street there with alcoholism, and I just think it's, it just needs to put to rest. So that's all really I want to say here, amongst all you folks, to put the city together with Connect Transit, to perhaps look into the investment at front and center. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Judy Sterns, Clayton Matheson, and Carl Woodward.
Good evening. I'd like to take a little trip down memory lane with the council. It's been interesting to see the indictments come out, the million dollars that left the taxpayers. There's taxpayers' money that we'll never see again, and isn't a million, well, nobody really knows, but maybe we'll find out. A little trip down memory lane. I've read in the paper that, oh my goodness, the contract was so complex, the numbers just weren't there. Somebody said they couldn't get the raw numbers. I'm not sure what raw is versus other kinds of numbers, but at any rate, there was every opportunity, every opportunity, for those council members who were there at the time to see this coming and to know what was happening. I'd like to just mention three quick things that if you didn't see them, it was because you didn't look, and if you didn't know, it was because you didn't want to know. First and foremost, the SIAM numbers, the numbers that SIAM gave us, as in their year-end reports, were very, very different from the audited numbers, those clean audits that we've heard about. They weren't there to audit fraud, they weren't there to look for fraud, and they didn't. They confirmed numbers, but they also gave the council a very stern warning that internal controls were not in place, and that's all we needed to know. So the contract was in place, okay. On April 14th of 2014, that's three years ago, if I'm not mistaken, three years ago, we had the perfect opportunity to delve into the contract and to renegotiate it. That was when amateur hockey was brought in versus the professional hockey, and I sat over there somewhere and said, "This is dead serious. This is critical." And we, because we do not know the numbers. We don't even know why we're getting a certain commission that we're getting, because we don't know the totals. And furthermore, when the totals were revealed, the SIAM was paying themselves commission on even sales tax that was coming in. Now, a high school business student knows that sales tax is not revenue. How did I know all this? I was willing to look. Furthermore, a certain blogger that you may not care to read, that's fine, but it seems that you would have been curious to look at BLN News and see what you were refuting, see what you didn't want to know, because every bit of it was laid out. And the final thing is the concessions. The city got a certain amount of money for the concessions, but it was based on nothing. It was based on error. We didn't know what the total revenue from the concessions was, and we could have demanded that information, we could have expected it. That is what Ms. Benjamin sued to get. Those are numbers that every single one of you who are on council should have demanded, should have said, "We have, we have to know this." And frankly, that was my intention on April 14th, when I threatened not to vote for the new hockey team unless, unless we got a good look at all the numbers that we should have had. And I was promised that would happen. It never happened. That's, that's all I, my time is up.
Thank you very much. Clayton Matheson, and Carl Woodward, and Tim Tilton.
Clayton Matheson, President of Bloomington Firefighters Local 49. I will attempt to be very brief because my message is very simple. Thank you. Saturday, October 7th, the Bloomington Firefighters put on a special event called Fire Ops 101. We had several of our local and state leaders there. I know that not all of you were able to attend due to scheduling conflicts, and we certainly appreciate that, and certainly appreciate your consideration and willingness to try to come. Ms. City Clerk Lawson, Mr. Mathie, Mr. Malamway, Ms. Hellman, and Ms. Bray. Also back there, we have a repeat offender, and Mr. Karch, and then Ms. Albertson. And then, two years ago, this is the second time that we hosted this event, so two years ago, we had Mr. Black, Mayor Renner, and Mr. Hales. I believe, Mr. Sage, you were there for as much time as you could allot, and then, oh, I'm sorry, most pertinent man in the building, Mr. Rasmussen was also there the other day. I'm sorry. You're behind me. I missed you. What this event was, was an event where we were able to take our local and state leaders, and we were able to show them and let them feel mentally, physically, and even emotionally what it is like to be a firefighter and EMS provider for our city. We put them through a lot of things during this event. This was 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM that day. They got to go in, take a hose line in, and put out a fire. They got to go into basically a big metal box that was on fire and sit and learn what it is to see all the smoke and the fire behavior. They got to go through and learn what a mass casualty incident is, and learn what, how to do a fast triage. They learned several different things about hazardous material incidents, and they also learned what it's like to pick up the jaws of life and figure out how to pop open a car door. They also learned a little bit about fire behavior and what it's, how fire progresses after it starts, and whether the room has a sprinkler system in it or not, and how that sprinkler system is effective or not effective. So again, I know it was a trying day for all of you, and I'm so happy that you were all able to attend. There are plenty photos and videos, and our good friends from W E K TV did a wonderful report on the event. It's all on our Facebook page, if anybody would like to go visit it. It is Bloomington Firefighters Union, I A F F, Local 49. I encourage you all to go visit that and talk to your local leaders about what they went through. And if you have any further questions, please contact me. Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton. Tim Tilton? Excuse me, Carl Woodward, I apologize. Carl Woodward, Tim Tilton, and Phil Reynolds. My apologies.
I want to visit with you for our three minutes on the arena.
If you could come in just a little bit, Carl.
For some of you, I've been speaking to the council for six and a half or more years about the financial statements, the accuracy, the timeliness, and access to data, and the city has fought me for six and a half years. Six and a half years. Four or five of you have met with me one-on-one, and you could stand it, where I brought up that issue. It's no wonder something like this happened. It's terrible, but you can't look the other way. I was told once by your management of the city, "I didn't understand accounting when they didn't know I was a CPA." Well, I think I probably know as much about accounting as anybody in this room. I've heard that some of you have been told by people in city that you couldn't get the data, the documents. Well, one, I've looked at the agreement. I've had an attorney look at the agreement, and that's baloney. Your prior city attorney wrote, "The city had the right to examine the books and look at every scrap of paper generated by the Coliseum related to the revenues and expenses." Well, so you're getting two stories, folks. You need to filter out which one is people trying to cover their backside versus not, because you're being misled. I've said to the city administration more than once, "If something I say up here is inaccurate or wrong, call me and tell me." I'm still waiting for the first phone call. And I've said that to David several times, haven't I? You don't have to respond, because you can. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that. The outside auditors, you need to ask them how much time they spend on the audit. If I were, I don't want to shift the blame to them. When you have a business, the city, and you have an entity, the arena, which I understand the city owns, somebody's got to double-check some of the numbers. As best I can tell you, folks spent zero time or almost that much checking your own numbers. I manage over 200, 300 businesses with up to 500 million of sales, and the internal staff always spends a little bit of time checking, and the auditors do something else. You folks wouldn't know that. That's no criticism. Once in a while, because I know some think I'm a goofball, and I am probably a little bit of a goofball, the goofballs do, are like blind squirrel, we find an acorn. No one listened. If you'd listened six years ago, we might not be here tonight. I'm not, I never had an inkling there was theft going on, but I knew the books were crap, and I knew it just looked awful. And as a summary, you all that were critical of Diane Benjamin owe her an apology, and I'd like to have the city reimburse her for the legal bill she paid to get the documents that you folks wouldn't do your job for, and I called her, and she spent less than $1,000. You owe that lady something. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. Tim Tilton, Phil Reynolds, and Shayna Wachinski.
I'm going to address the question of whether Venue Works should be allowed to move forward with doing business in regards to the BCPA. I think past performance over the last 18 months at the Coliseum is something to be looked very seriously at. I think there's been gross underperformance in the quality of bookings, the number of bookings, the type of acts that they've brought in, and this all affects the food and beverage dollars generated. And I would like to also have everyone pay close attention to the percentage of potential seats sold to the books they did, the acts they did book. Also, I would encourage you to look at Burlington, Iowa, where they pulled out of, citing poor performance of the facility itself, which Mr. Peters did mention. But there's another one, Bemidji, Minnesota, saying that that facility was not capable of drawing. Our facility is capable of drawing good quality acts, but I heard mentioned that we were paying too much. Did we pay a reasonable price for what quality acts we were getting at the time, and did they fill the seats? And my opinion is, yes, they did. Are there questions about other entities? Sure. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Tim. Next, Phil Reynolds, then Shayna Wachinski, and Scott Steimerling.
Good evening. I'm a road commissioner for Old Town Township. It's just east of Twente Barnes, and I'd like to bring up some problems we're having out there with this annexation of the Grove South Division. When this first took place several years ago, I came to a lot of the meetings, and I came to the planning commission meetings and brought up the negative effects it was going to have on our township, being it was out two miles past the city limits. And they assured me at the time that these people would use Ireland Grove Road, which was going to be rebuilt, and there would be no traffic on the township roads. And now they've hooked up two of the very east roads to 2100 East, which is a township road, and now we're getting scores of traffic heading north to Route 9, and this road is insufficient for this number of cars, and we've spent probably $15,000 in the last month fixing the edges of the road because it's not wide enough. And I was just hoping that somebody could come up with some kind of a plan, maybe to help the township with all this traffic. We tried to get a deal with the city at the time to take those roads that they'd come out on, and we couldn't come to an agreement. They wanted me to maintain the roads. They would take the roads, the township would maintain them, with the motor fuel tax, which is hard to do. I think motor fuel tax is $1,200 a mile. Be hard for us to take care of them for that kind of money. But at the time, I'm not sure why that this was pushed through. The city planning commission was kind of, they wanted more answers as to what kind of a traffic control would be out there. And then, at the very last minute, at the one of the planning commission meetings, I was told I was talking to the wrong people, and that they were told that they're not to consider any negative effects on the township, it's the positive effects to the city of Bloomington. So we're left now with all this traffic, and I'm just hoping that somebody can figure something out, because it's, now they're going to annex this more in. I don't know how many houses that'll be, and there'll be more traffic. We're getting a lot of construction traffic, and we actually have to close the road to work on it now. Used to, we might get a car an hour before this ever came out that far, and now it's just car after car. So for our own safety, we have to close the road to work on it, and everybody has to go around coming from the north. I'm sure they're not happy, but it's just for our own safety. So when you consider this, I would hope somebody can come up with some kind of a solution to that being out that far. And I'd like to say, too, at the time, that if there was any way possible, and I know there's not, that Tom Hamilton was pushing this, and they should take his pension away, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you very much, Phil. Shayna Wachinski, Scott Steimerling, and Lee Yutzi.
Shayna Wachinski. What I'm going to say is short, sweet, to the point, but no doubt controversial. It's me. Mayor Renner, it's great to see you. I'm so glad to have you back. And Karen, you did an amazing job in his absence, as did the rest of the city council, and good to see you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. I'm sure we'd love to hear that. Scott Steimerling, Lee Yutzi, and Angela Scott.
Scott Steimerling, Ward 5. My concern is regarding that Mayor Renner was, he was allegedly, he allegedly placed charges on a city-owned credit card, but it came to light, and then, you know, forgot, you know, that he placed it on a city-owned credit card. I find that hard to believe. You know, if somebody else would have done that, you know, they would have, why not take the city credit cards away, period, and they pay for it, and then they, the city reimburses them? You know, there's no, no problem with that. My father was superintendent of schools in this town at one time, and they did, there's no such thing as a school district-owned credit card. No, no such thing. They paid for it, and then they reimbursed them. But they had to have receipts, and they had to be legitimate. I'm extremely disappointed in the city council that they did not remove you from office. This is a governmental entity. It is not a private business like Illinois Westland. You'd have done it at Westland, that's one thing. You do it at the city of Bloomington, that's something totally different. My other thing is Diane Benjamin, I know you can't stand her. I think she does a great job for the people of the city of Bloomington. She brings things to light that weren't brought to light for years, the other way. The people said, "We do not want the Coliseum built," and the people on the city council at that time rammed it down our throats. And I know you think it's a great deal, but if it's such a great deal, then let the people that voted that Coliseum in, let them pay the entire cost of that Coliseum. The, as far, I'm, it's extremely unfortunate that you were elected to a second-term mayor , Renner, because this city does not need anyone that stands up and grandstands. Why was it that you were able to return to Illinois Westland as your professor duties when they said you were on, Karen said you were on leave of absence? And I know she was trying to protect you, but, you know, that kind of stuff does not fly. City administration, they're closed, and sometimes they've been, I know they're closed between noon and 1:00, but there have been times they've been closed all day. And I know this may come as a real shocker, but this building belongs to the city of Bloomington, not the elected officials and our city manager, soon-to-be ex-city manager. All of a sudden, the packets, they quit printing those because they said that they were too costly. What about the packets to the city council? They've got, they could get them online, too. That's, that's money you could save, but I realize you're not interested in saving any money. I can see my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Scott. Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, Lee Yutzi, Angela Scott. I'm sorry. Should keep my glasses on.
Good evening, and welcome back, Mr. Mayor. Who am I? What do I want? What am I, what am I here to tell you? I'm Lee Yutzi. I own a vehicle-for-hire company that works downtown over 10 years, Magic Bus. So for those of you who don't know me, I see what goes on downtown, and it's my concern to talk about that. And one of the things I'm talking about now is the hire backs downtown, I talked about last time, being placed in such a position as to favor one company over the others. Okay? They could block a lane with a car, but instead, they pull the car back to allow one company to be able to come and go on Mulberry. That was last time. Then I realized, as I looked through the ordinance, that, okay, so last year, the year before, you gave the police the authority to prohibit or designate parking for downtown shuttles. Downtown shuttles are 12 to 70-passenger vehicles that transport and return for payment. On December 20th of 2016, Assistant Chief Bay- On December 20th of 2016, Assistant Chief Bay sent out a letter to all of us, as per the ordinance, that said, "Downtown shuttles, as defined, will now park on center," and designated taxi cab and TNC on the 500 Block of North Main. They don't have the authority to do that. Okay, there's six signs, six signs. If I just lost my picture, too. There are six signs that are on 500 Block of North Main that says, "It's a tow-away zone, 10 to 3 a.m., Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, just for taxi cabs and TNC." They don't have the authority to do that. How much do those signs cost? Okay? How much, how much do we pay for the labor to go into committing this fraud on the public? I want to know how many people were towed illegally? And, you know, you can have all the coffee with cops and social media savvy all you want, and then you pull some crap like this. I've already went to them. If I'm wrong, they haven't told me, because they're, it's, they're silent. You know, I say, "This is wrong," and they're silent, because that's where they want them. I mean, you have the ability to put that in with one vote. It's easy. I've seen you do it. But instead, you know, they divert public funds to have their way, to, you know, push their agenda, and it's wrong. Okay? You know, and my grandfather, you know, is a conservative guy, he was a sheriff, he was a mayor streeter, you know, he's probably rolling over in his grave at the way I come at, you know, establishment and say, you know, "Let's get this right," and question it. But that's, my birthday is tomorrow, October 10th, 1969. That's the era I grew up in, and I'm here to tell you that it really grinds on me that, you know, the, the people that I trust are trying to pull the wool over my eyes with my own money. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Angela Scott.
Water is essential for life. It is essential for life. It has also become a commodity and a political tool. In Texas and in Florida, there was price gouging. In Puerto Rico, there was no drinking water, which became a political fiasco. And in Flint, Michigan, an entire community was poisoned. This happened after the city became financially insolvent. The state of Michigan sent in an emergency financial advisor whose only job was to cut the budget at any cost. You sit here and you consider ways to spend the money entrusted to you by the citizens of Bloomington, to build a library, hire consultants, or court the media with free lunches on the back of taxpayers. You ought to consider ways to save our money. There's no money left for the citizens to help each other anymore. Someone tell me how a family or an individual that lives in poverty is supposed to dig their way out when you are robbing them. The city of Bloomington will turn your water off if you don't pay the fees. Those of you that voted to increase those fees, you just imposed a tax on something that is essential to life. New York doesn't charge tax on tampons, but in Bloomington, we charge a tax on water. You are imposing a tax on individuals and families whose budgets cannot take another hit. Mr. Scott, I'm particularly disappointed in you. You are making life more difficult for some of the most vulnerable members of this community, people in your area, people who work with you. Shame on you. All of you need to pay attention, regardless of whether you agree with the politics of Steven Purcell, Judy Sterns, or Diane Benjamin. They tried to inform you years ago that the city was losing money, millions of dollars might have been saved, and that mighty money might have been used to repair the sewers and streets. Instead, you followed Mr. Renner and God knows who else to silence those who pointed out what has now become obvious. The city of Bloomington leadership, either through their actions or through your silence, has failed this community. And even if you aren't arrested for stealing the money from the Coliseum, you are responsible. I'm going to close with a quote. "In the face of catastrophe, he serves up slander. His fragile ego and inability to take responsibility ever are fatal flaws." That's a quote from David Axelrod, addressing Trump's response to Puerto Rico. "We don't need any more politicians. We need honest and decent human beings." I beg you to be that for this community.
Thank you very much, Angela. Okay, at this point, we move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that members of the council would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Alderwoman Bray.
Seven A, please.
Seven A.
Yes. I have seven E.
Seven E?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm betting I know why.
Yes, you do.
Okay. Any other items? At this point, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, with the exceptions of items seven A and seven E?
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Painter. Is there a second? Second by Alderwoman Howman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if you go ahead and vote, obviously an aye vote, is to approve the consent agenda as presented, with the exceptions of items seven A and E. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk, and I'm going to go and turn to Alderwoman Bray with item seven A.
Thank you, Mayor. Seven A is the minutes from our last city council meeting. And I have an amendment to the minutes of the meeting. In particular, in our packet, page seven, the second paragraph from the top includes a discussion of the sewer ordinance. And in particular, there's a comment there about Alderman Bray stated she was voting yes, sees it as a winning proposition for the community, and there were, there were two reasons that I set out that it was a winning proposition. And then Moboka responded to one of those reasons, but neither of the reasons appeared in the minutes. So I just wanted the minutes to reflect the, the two reasons, in that it accomplishes our top priorities of public health and restoration of our infrastructure. And then your comments regarding infrastructure then have context as well.
Have context.
Yes. Thank you.
So is that a motion to approve with those amendments?
That would be a motion to approve with those amendments. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there a second to that? Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Any further discussion on that item? Okay, if you go ahead and vote, that would be with respect to the item as amended. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Excuse me. We're going to go right along to item seven E. Alderman Millomboy.
I just want to recuse myself.
You just want to accuse yourself? You want to step outside, and we'll get you?
That's right.
In an hour?
No.
I'm teasing. Is there a motion to approve this item seven E as presented?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Painter. Any discussion? Okay, if you go ahead and vote in favor, aye, or opposed against, of course. The motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk, and we can let Alderman Millomboy come back We're well under budget. We set an hour, and I bet that wasn't even one minute. Okay. Okay. And we move on to our regular agenda, and the regular agenda is item seven A, consideration of an ordinance approving the annexation and rezoning to R1C, Single Family Residential District, for the sixth addition to the Grove at the Kikapu Creek, approximately 12.084 acres. And we have a very brief presentation by Tom Debriner, our Director of Community Development, and then a brief council discussion, and we did have a question at public comment, and I just wanted to clarify for everyone, and I believe, Tom, you will probably clarify for this, this is part of an agreement that we have already signed. This is not something that, even if we wanted to stop sprawl, that there's anything that we could do about.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Mr. Debriner.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You took away the first half of my presentation, but that's all right. City of Bloomington entered into an annexation agreement for 450 acres in 2005. That agreement expires in 2025. In that agreement, the city must adopt an ordinance annexing certain tracts of land within 30 days of receiving an annexation plat and supporting documents which request annexation associated with the Grove. On September 18th, 2017, the city clerk received a petition, an annexation plat. The proposed zoning is also associated with that. When you annex, it becomes agriculture initially, and then there's also rezoning requests associated with this. That rezoning is consistent with the plan approved in 2011. And staff is in support of this and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Mr. Debriner? Alderman Mathie, and then Sage and Burgess.
I'm just curious, are contracts like this, requiring us to annex within 30 days, is that common in the industry? I'm just asking. I don't know.
Once you have an annexation agreement, first, you know, those can lay out a number of criteria. This happens to be one. 30 days is pretty common, when we've already agreed on the plan upfront, yes.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Sage.
Thank you. And maybe Jim Carch may have to come up, Tom, I'm not sure, but I, I got a, a call from someone late today, and I didn't really have time to chat with anybody. I know recently, and I think we had actually a budget amendment that dealt with some infrastructure related to the Grove. Didn't we, Scott? Okay. And so I'm wondering, this is, this is not, that, that issue, that amendment is not related to the one that's in front of us. And, and somebody was just asking me for clarification on that. So if you wouldn't mind taking just 30 seconds and, and just, you know, differentiating those, those two items, the conversation that we had.
Maybe Jim can work on the differentiation, but this is simply the annexation topic.
Yeah. Well, because there's, there's the, the, almost the tagline in the staff report, that the city council will have to decide if we have to oversize the infrastructure at some point in the future. And, and I thought we'd already partially had that conversation. So, so just clarify, because...
Mr. Debriner is correct. The annexation agreement is separate from the oversizing agreement, but with the understanding the area covered within the annexation agreement, when it comes, there will have to be a decision on oversizing for the sewer that's been talked about. So tonight is not that decision. Tonight is the annexation, but that, that does say, "The train is coming for the decision for the council on the oversizing decision." So just to say that again, by, by voting yes to this, you're accepting the annexing this property that we've already agreed that we will annex, but later on, there'll have to be that decision on the sewer oversizing that we've talked about before.
So, so just so I'm clear, Jim, and thank you. So the oversizing would be related to potential annexation and development beyond this, this tract of land here that we're talking about tonight?
So what you're saying is that anytime you oversize sewer in an area like this, the intention is actually not for the, this piece that's being annexed. The intention of oversizing, as I think you were pointing out, is for that upstream area in the future, along that tributary. So yes, that's the intention of oversizing.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Tom.
Alderwoman Burgess.
And I'm not sure this is really a question so much as a, as a hope that we will continue to have a conversation with Mr. Reynolds, because I think he raises some important concerns about the imposition that this development is placing on other, other units of government, and whether or not those were taken into account when this was put in, or if any contingencies were made. Maybe Jim's got some thoughts on that.
Stand here again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I don't, and I don't know that we necessarily need to get off on that tangent right now, but I hope that this is something that we are engaging with Mr. Reynolds about.
I've talked to Mr. Reynolds, Phil, before on this. He's actually correct, 100% correct. I think that from a staff perspective, because of the intersection of the traffic signal, that traffic signal with Twanda Barnes and Ireland Grove Road, there's a lot of backup. If you head westbound into that intersection, we see people, and there's concern from a staff perspective, on people then taking the roundabout. So what they do is they head 2100 East, and then it's really that Oakland extension, and then head west back into town, because people feel like it's quicker. Well, his, his roads are not designed for that extra traffic, and so that, that is a concern on his part. And so we, we will be bringing that traffic signal modification to the council for that, you know, consideration upcoming, and for some additional discussion, but that is, that fits in with this whole discussion.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Go anywhere now.
Alderman Black.
Thank you. And thank you both for your work on this, and I appreciate all the information that's gone to it, and Alderman Sage's questions as well. It's always very interesting to me, as I've sat up here for the last few years, I've, I've seen a number of contracts that we've kind of been bound to, and we're, we're asked a question to vote on it, and really, we don't have a choice per the legal agreements. That unfair to say, Jeff? So, you know, throughout the community, you know, in, in both the campaigns and then just conversations, you know, over the last few years, people are just tired of the annexation. And that's not just from Ward Seven, that's from wards all over the community, including the Grove itself. And it's never a comfortable place to be, where, you know, if we don't follow through with something like this, we could ultimately put ourselves in some legal jeopardy as a result. And I know that we've been working hard to try to get some of these global agreements and get a better understanding in our hands around some of these agreements that were made, and, you know, I never like to blame our problems in the past, but, but moving forward, these, we don't see these types of agreements that we're, we're crafting nowadays. So, you know, this is a tough one for me, because, you know, on the one hand, it's going to get marked down as a yes vote, because, you know, we have to say so, but we also need to make a very clear statement to the public that this is not the direction that we want to go in. I think the public is expecting something like that from us, from this council, and that's just the sense I'm getting from, from the community. So I, I understand our obligations. I understand why we are going forward with this project. I'm going to be voting no on it, just because I think that we need to send a message out to our community that we are listening, we hear you, we appreciate the information in the comp plan. And I, I also, in the executive summary, there was a paragraph describing why this violates the comp plan, and it's, it's interesting that we, we have to put that in there. So on behalf of those 8,000 citizens who participated in that process, I'm going to be voting no on this.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the annexation and rezoning, single-family residents for this sixth addition to the Grove at Kikapu?
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Howman. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Second by Alderwoman, I suppose, Alderman Millomboy. I'm changing people's sex right now.
What'd you say? Monsieur.
Can I see you outside?
Join the club. All right, at this point, if everyone will go ahead and vote. The ayes have it, from eight to one, there is one shocking nay to announce, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Black.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move right along to a presentation of a 20-year Materials Recovery and Resource Management Plan for McLean County, Bloomington, and Normal. And we have a presentation by Michael Brown from the Ecology Action Center, and a rather brief council presentation. Michael, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the council. So I appreciate this opportunity, just to give you a, a update where we are at in progressing towards a new solid waste management plan for our community. Just a little bit of background to give you context, especially on the Ecology Action Center, for those of you who don't know our history. So our origins lie on a one-day recycling drive back in 1971. We operated recycling services for the community under the name Operation Recycle for a couple of decades, doing so at first under Mid-Central Community Action, before becoming a separate nonprofit organization. Eventually, in the 1990s, the municipalities did take over the role of recycling as part of their, their trash and waste services. At that time, as we transitioned to become the Ecology Action Center, we took on eventually the, the role of education outreach on behalf of the county and municipalities for recycling and waste issues, eventually taking on the role of solid waste planning for the community as well. And so we are here tonight, as we are looking at a new solid waste management plan, skipping over a few of these. The Illinois Solid Waste Planning and Recycling Act mandates that every county does have a solid waste management plan. It is fairly common, where you have urban areas within those counties, for those communities to be part of that planning process as well. Our first solid waste management plan was approved in 1991. There is a mandate that every five years, there is then a, a review and update to that plan, so that has been performed every five years. The Ecology Action Center performing several of those most recent updates. So bring us up to 2017, actually, where we're due for a five-year update to our waste plan. Instead, we took a different approach, because everything has changed, because our solid waste plan is so far out of date. Instead, we were directed to work on a new 20-year solid waste plan for our Instead, we're directed to work on a new twenty-year solid waste plan for our community. So one of the bigger variables that has changed that we do want to, to keep in mind is McLean County landfill. We have been monitoring this for years, and actually, for, for years, I've been telling you that the, the end is near. Well, the end is very near at this point. McLean County landfill is likely reaching capacity in the first quarter of two thousand and eighteen, so we are soon going to become a post landfill community. However, this in itself is not a crisis, as there is plenty of landfill capacity within East Central Illinois. Looking here at this chart, we, we can see many years worth of capacity, especially looking at Clinton landfill, looking at Livingston County landfill. Livingston County, actually, I think this is a conservative estimate, I've heard estimates of thirty to forty years of capacity at Livingston County landfill, which currently is the default of where our waste will go when the McLean County landfill closes sometime next year. So that's one of the bigger variables that really has been impetus behind this new solid waste plan. We've actually been working on this now for well over two years, as far as research and outreach and focus groups, stakeholder meetings, field trips, to say, a lot of work has gone into this by a lot of individuals, but we're now in kind of the review process and looking for, for comment, both from, from this council, but also from the, the public. And so here, we just have a little highlight of our, our timeline here. So we are here at October ninth, but beyond that, we're going to a couple other bodies for informational presentations like this before we do get to the, the formal approval process late this year and into January of next year, before sending this on to the Illinois EPA for approval. So one of the other variables we want to look at here is the success and progress that has been made by decades worth of hard work in our community. This is a look at our recycling rates since two thousand and two, when we set our recycling goal of forty percent. And so we did actually, just in two thousand and sixteen, finally meet and exceed that goal, which actually sets us in a very good place to look forward then, over this next twenty years, actually setting some very ambitious recycling rate goals, which by the new plan, will automatically be bumped up every five years at that review and update process. How are we going to meet these ambitious goals? Actually, I'm jumping ahead of myself. In determining how we're going to meet those goals, we did do a lot of research, including a very specific composition of our waste stream as it stands right now. Looking at this chart, we can see about twenty-six percent of what we're currently throwing away is recyclables, and this is standard recyclables that you could be putting into your recycle bin. But even beyond that, looking at a lot of these other categories, these are materials that are recoverable and recyclable by some means. A very small portion of this is actually trash or waste that does need to go into the landfill. Looking at that same data, but in a different way, we can look here and see all these different waste streams, and actually, in the yellow column, see how many thousands of tons of recoverable material we are putting in the landfill. And so, looking at that data, we've outlined six new priorities that are, make up the, the main content of this new solid waste plan. And so the first one, looking at that forty-six thousand tons of recyclables that is currently being landfilled by our community, how are we going to address that? One big way we can address that is looking at commercial recycling. There is some commercial recycling going on in our community, but a lot more could happen. So whether we're looking at this priority or the other ones I'll discuss next, each of these, we're looking at a range of options to actually meet these priorities, whether it is facilitating increased recycling, whether we're looking at more hands-on approach, whether we're looking at incentivizing, or eventually possibly looking at an ordinance. One example here, Peoria, the city of Peoria, has a very successful commercial recycling ordinance that has been well-received and actually made a big difference in increasing commercial recycling. Looking down at construction demolition waste, we currently have fifty-one thousand tons of that waste going into the landfill. That's something else we could be capturing right now and recycling in our community, so that makes up our priority number two. Looking again at that forty-six thousand tons of recyclables, we know that that's not all commercial, some of that is residential, but we've been doing a good job at the single-family residential recycling. But for a lot of our community, these are the options for recycling, in that these are the drop-offs that are located in Normal for people who live in multifamily housing, who do not have automated curbside recycling services. So priority number three is addressing that, multifamily recycling. And this does make a, this is a much higher priority or a bigger issue in Normal in particular, where we have a high amount of student housing, and that, it does come out very frequently in Normal, but we know is, well, in Bloomington, we can definitely make a difference and increase our recycling by addressing this issue. Jumping down to food scraps or organic waste, twenty-six thousand tons of this is currently going to landfill. These are materials that are just raw, natural resources, these are organic nutrients, these are things that, that could easily be recovered if we had a proper facility. And so looking at food waste composting going forward, especially looking at the commercial sector, institutions, large businesses that have a large amount of food waste that could be composted, there is a small program in existence in our community, but we really need to bolster that, we need to make it bigger, and we probably need a new facility in order to be able to address that. But this new facility could be a profitable revenue-producing facility for an operator. Household hazardous waste actually makes up one of the smallest volumes of materials here, but yet, one of the most important in that this is very dangerous stuff. And so all of you probably know about our community-wide successful efforts at addressing household hazardous waste in the absence of state funding. Traditionally, the state of Illinois has paid for this right now, not so much. So we've come together, City Bloomington, Town of Normal, McLean County, Ecology Action Center, and have created this private-public partnership. It's been very successful, and yet, we're not reaching everybody. And so what we really need, despite the successes of this program, is to look at a permanent household hazardous waste collection facility. This is how we're really going to address this problem best. This is akin to providing single-stream curbside automated recycling for recyclables. That strategy removed the barriers to participation and greatly increased the, the participation in recycling programs in Bloomington and Normal. Likewise, a permanent hazardous waste collection facility will do the same for increasing participation in safe disposal of our hazardous wastes. Finally, number six, priority six, because everything I've talked about is a lot, a lot of work on top of all the efforts that we're currently doing, the Ecology Action Center, the city, the town, the county. Priority six is that there needs to be more additional technical assistance and outreach in order to facilitate all these previous strategies. So looking again at that chart of the composition of our landfill waste, noting again that a lot of these are things that could be recovered, looking at overall, my percentages didn't make the, the jump there on the chart, we're just going to skip that one then, looking at that same chart, but if we start to consider that we could be recovering a lot of these materials, and then in contrast, say, twenty years out, at the end of this new twenty-year solid waste plan, we could be looking at seventy-four percent or more of our waste is recovered. So in, completely inverting the paradigm that we're recovering most of our waste and, and throwing away just a small amount versus the inverse as it stands right now. So in summary, the landfill, the end is near, it's very near. Our new solid waste plan, this twenty-year plan, will meet the needs of the Illinois Solid Waste Planning and Recycling Act. This new plan as well will better position us to manage our waste, essentially what it comes down to, the choices in front of us. We can continue the status quo, which will mean paying money to ship our waste further and further away, to bury it in a hole in the ground, or we can promote local businesses, and we can grow our local economy by building our recycling, recycling economy instead. So we are currently in this ninety-day mandatory public comment period. The solid waste plan you have in your packet is what is under review. This is also available for public download from the Ecology Action Center website or the McLean County website. Hard copies are also available for the public through the county clerk's office, and that's where we can take written comments from the public on this plan. So I'm here to entertain any questions or comments from you at this time.
Questions of Michael. Comments? Thank you, by the way. So we'll start with Alderman Sage and then Melo Wambwe.
Thank you. So, Mr. Brenner, I know we saw some, some slides earlier where you had some percentage and some out years of seeing those percentages increase, and so I guess my initial question is, is more philosophical with maybe more of a specific follow-up. So do we anticipate, is it, is it the intent of this plan to, to find ways to encourage voluntary increases so that we get to those goals, or, or does the plan anticipate mandates?
Yes. So essentially, the, the plan outlines the six priorities, which are addressing these, essentially, these gaps in our current services. How we get there is still to be determined, and so once even we have this plan approved, there's going to be an ongoing process, ongoing meetings with stakeholders and focus groups to determine for each of these priorities, the best strategy to actually get there. And for each of these, we will be looking at the range of voluntary participation to mandates. And so, yes, we will be likely back at some point for some of these to possibly ask you to consider a mandate for a particular recycling sector. So that is on the table, everything is on the table, but in doing so, we're also looking at cost effectiveness, because bigger picture, we want to do what is most cost-effective and going to conserve the most resources, both natural resources, but financial resources too. And so we're, we're not going to be looking at, you know, the idea of an ordinance or mandate casually.
My hope would be that, because I'm, I'm naturally not comfortable with, with mandates.
True.
And, and I, I think back to whenever it was that, that the city enacted the smoking ban, and, and part of the conversation I remember having was I'd rather see restaurants choose to, to look across the street at, at a competitor and say, you know what, they're, they're smoke-free, they have more business, therefore, I will voluntarily go, go smoke-free. It seems today, in today's world of social media and where, where this, this sharing of information, it seems to me there's opportunities to help businesses kind of create their own competitive advantage by voluntarily being, being part of that. I'm, I'm just leery of, because, because I've sat up here now and I've watched, again, I've watched this incrementally, how these things work. And, and the, the first bite of the apple is always a small bite.
True.
And then, and then the bites get bigger as, as you go forward, and then suddenly, you're, you're left going, wait a minute, this is not what I wanted. So, so I guess what I hear you saying is that you could, with the adoption of this plan, then with, with the what of, of this plan, then when you come back and ask for house, you could envision, not saying that it would happen, but it is a possibility, then you would come back and ask the city council for specific mandates in order to get to those numerical goals as opposed to those out years.
That is certainly possible.
Okay.
And if I may go, go one further on that, so I, I myself am, am somewhat leery of, of mandates in, in some of this, and know that that is not necessarily going to be the most popular choice. So even in our outreach, in our focus groups, I was actually surprised to hear actually from some businesses that we engaged, the support for a mandate, and, and in many cases, it was because it created a level playing field. And so there was much, much more support, there was, in some cases, unanimous support among the businesses we engaged for a mandate. And so that surprised me and showed me that, that there, that that really does make it more realistic, you know, and helpful actually for them in some ways. And so that's, that changed my perspective somewhat.
And I appreciate that, I mean, I feel like that's a credible response. I, I mean, I, I will probably vote yes here in a few minutes, although I'm not totally decided yet. My concern is, is then that to, to come back and, and with, with mandates, you know, because I, I, excuse me, no offense to you, but I, but again, I've seen how this works over a few years, right? It starts off as voluntary and, and, and almost a group hug in some of these situations, and it comes back to, to thou, thou shall, thou wilt. And, and so, you know, I certainly, I would be opposed to mandates going forward, so I appreciate you, appreciate your, your.
And if I can make one correction, we're not seeking approval of anything this evening, this is informational and, and for you to receive and for me to answer any questions, and so I will come back in a couple months seeking approval.
You'll vote tonight, thank you, on this. Alderman Melo Wambwe and Matt.
And just to kind of follow up on that, I'm curious if you, this would also include incentives for maybe, you know, people who want to explore that as a business or something like that?
That's certainly on the table as well. Where we can build new businesses, where we can grow existing businesses, that's definitely something that, that we want to happen. Just the, the growth potential for this sector is, is huge if we, if we nurture that, and if we, we follow this correctly. And so that is definitely, we, we want more local businesses to take care of this, and the idea of a, a future food waste composting facility, the idea of putting that out to bid and having that be, you know, a privately-run operation that provides a service that somebody else can profit from, somebody else can manage, but that we have that in our community meeting our needs, and that's, we, we want to grow those kind of businesses.
And one other question, if I may, what happens with the landfill once it closes? You know, does it ever reopen, or we just kind of, that's it, it's done forever and ever?
Yeah, forever's a long time. So we, we know that it'll take, you know, approximately two years to actually complete the, the closure processes, they'll, you know, cover it up and such, and, and beyond that, you know, it is kind of a brownfield site, and so it's not really suitable for, for most kinds of development as far as any additions or reopening in the future, and that is a, a private decision, you know, by Republic Services Allied Waste who owns it. Currently, I've heard no, no communications regarding any additional expansion of this landfill. It is actually, it is a small landfill by landfill standards, and so the economies of scale are not really there for operating it versus the Livingston County landfill, and so for them to go ahead and finish up here and, and put their, their efforts over in Livingston County is going to probably be more cost-effective for them.
Alderman, if I could, as we've spoken to Republic who operates at the landfill and that, they have a transfer station, and it surprised me when we took a tour of their facility. Currently, there's been many times that they have trucked waste from their transfer station up to Pontiac, which is another facility I believe that they own and manage. So in the future, as we take our waste to their transfer station, instead of them trucking and taking it over to landfill, they'd take it to Pontiac or somewhere like that. So more information on that will be presented in the future as to what that will be, but they have done that on many occasions in the past.
Alderman Mathie.
So thank you for this presentation, it, it makes me happy. As a guy who has businesses who have always voluntarily done everything we can to recycle, looking at opportunities to make it easier is good, because it's, it's not easy as a business right now, it's, it's actually a huge pain, but we are happy that we actually have more volume in recyclables that go out of our businesses than in actual trash, and that makes us happy personally. And I'm especially happy about the idea of the food compost, because that's been the hardest one for us to tackle, to figure out what to do. You know, we've had various farmers that we have worked with privately over the years who have, you know, we've literally packaged it up into five-gallon buckets and sent it to farms, and it's, it's a difficult process, it's difficult to manage, especially around doing everything they can to make sure the pests never happen. And so the idea that a, a long-term plan is getting put into place so that we can deal with more of this effectively, and, and hopefully, most importantly, cost-efficiently, because, you know, the, you talked about, we had a limited pilot right now, we talked to them and found it so expensive that we couldn't do it, so we had to find other ways to, to make it happen. So I just want to say thank you for this, because, you know, we've always tried to run our businesses respectful of the community and the, and the, the environment, and it, I love seeing that we have a long-term plan coming together to make sure this happens and continues going forward, so thank you. So thank you.
Thank you. Saying that, thank you, Mr. Brown, for all you do, and we appreciate it.
Mayor, can I just ask two quick questions? First, going back to those original goals.
Yes.
If you could just flip back to that a minute, and I'll ask my question. Is, and this goes back to some comments that Alderman Sage mentioned, but it just seemed that, one, it took quite a few years just to go from 30 to 40 percent, you know, an increase of 10. Yet, as we look out the 20 years, we're going from 40 to 80 percent. So let's see, what's that time, 2002 to 2016?
14 years.
14 years. And what's the time period for, I think, one of the next slides where we go over the next 20?
We're looking at 10 percent over five years.
Pardon?
10 percent every five years.
Okay.
So this is ambitious.
And I guess that's one point, because as I look at that, I just wondered if it's too overly ambitious, if it's being so overly aggressive that we are leading to the fact that we are going to have this council and other governing boards are going to have to institute some mandatory forcing people, businesses, schools and others to all comply. And we're going from a voluntary to a mandatory mandate. And I know we all kind of bring up and hate to see the federal government and the state mandate regulations on us, but I would just suggest the council give consideration, is this time period overly aggressive? And second, I think to help kind of answer that is, maybe you could bring back, what are you seeing in comparative goals and actual accomplishments, successes by other entities that also have to prepare these plans? And especially where they've been able to achieve greater percentages in recycling, but still in a voluntary basis? Or is it really in order to achieve these higher levels, have others had to go to a mandatory mandate through regulations? So I think that might be helpful from a decision-making, is to get that additional information for this council and the town of Normal and the county to at least consider it before being asked to adopt it. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Michael. Next, our last item for, under our regular agenda, is consideration of resolution authorizing the city manager to approve energy supply contracts for city facilities. We have a five-minute presentation by Mr. Rasmussen, and then a brief council discussion.
Turn that one off, Scott. Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of city council. Fortunately, I am the last presentation, and also the shortest one for you here today. What we're going to ask you for is a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve energy supplies contract for the city facilities. We did this a couple of months ago, and that was for energy aggregation for all of the not municipal areas, but all of the citizens for private residences. What we're doing now is we're going to go back and do a contract for our municipal facilities. The first facility we're talking about is the arena, which actually will expire in October 31st. So we need to do that one relatively quickly. And then the other 39 facilities in the city will expire on May 31st. The reason we'd like to do this now quickly is because not only does that arena contract expire on the 31st, but we're at historic low costs in energy right now. It's the lowest cost we've had in five years. And I want to explain two pieces about this. One, what we'd like to do is do this in a couple of iterations, so that we can do a short contract with the arena for about six months, to then get it at the same time that we do the rest of the facilities. And then another contract to put all of the other facilities in the same time sequence that we do our residential aggregation. And the reason for that is, it's simpler for all of you, because instead of bringing it back multiple times, we only do this once every three years. But in a very advantageous position, when we put all of the municipal facilities together with the city, then what we have is we have a very large mass of costs for our Stone River Group to go back and get us a low cost, because we got some bargaining power with a large number. But for right now, what we're doing is, we're just asking for a resolution to do these contracts, one, for the arena before the 31st, and then for the other 39 facilities before the end of May. Russ Waller, our facility manager, is here. He's been in constant communication with Don Fronton from the Stone River Group, and they'd be ready to bring forward a contract to us relatively soon, if we can have a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve such a contract. And that's the basis of it. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and Russ can answer any questions as well.
Question to Mr. Rasmussen.
Okay, great.
Must have been incredibly concise.
Great.
All I do is go to the bathroom, I come back and.
We'll look forward to bringing back a contract at a very low rate for you then. Thank you.
Well, we need, at this point then, we do need a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve energy contracts for city facilities, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the resolution. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion, there.
Move by Alderwoman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Bray. Any further discussion? Okay? If everyone will go ahead and vote, please. Motion carries in nine to zero. There are no names to announce, Madam Clerk. And at this point, we move on to the city manager's discussion.
Mayor and council, just one item just wanted to share with you. I know as we've looked at the many, many projects the city's staff has been working on, one that has come up relating to the police department and body cameras, I just wanted to report to you that the police chief has shared with me, unfortunately, they're going to be looking at another vendor, a manufacturer of body-worn cameras, the two that they have tried, and that we were hoping maybe meet our current needs, apparently have not. And because of that, as a look to a third vendor to pilot cameras, our plan to hopefully have body cameras in operation and going live will probably be delayed into the first part of the year. But that's something that in the future, we can kind of share a little bit more on, but it's, many cities continue to experiment with many of these cameras. And I think as we kind of continue to watch nationwide, we find some of the problems that occur when body cameras are not turning on, or they don't have the battery. So it is definitely a technology that continues to evolve and sometimes get better. But I just wanted to let you know that our original plan to hopefully be going live with these cameras by the end of this year will more than likely be in the next year. So I just wanted to share with, that piece of news with you, as we got that from the police chief. And other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Okay. First of all, actually, it's, one, good to be back. But two, I wanted to thank Tom Dayberiner, who has announced his retirement from, or leaving the city, not retirement, but leaving the city. And we thank you so much for all you've done, for code enforcement for our city, for making the city a better and safer place. Thank you, Tom.
I'd also like to thank Kiran Schmidt, Mayor Protem, and Acting Mayor for performing some of the formal duties during my absence. And I do want to talk about something that's really important and really serious. And it is a very, very serious thing, I think, for our entire country, and specifically for our community. And that is the increasing trend toward acrimony in public discussion, and a decline in public debate, whether it's the White House, or the State House, or the courthouse, we're seeing this. And this is a very unfortunate trend. And frankly, here, at the local level, and I'm talking about things more than just words. I mean, I can't even remember all the he said, she said stuff about whether the Secretary of State last week called the President a moron. And I'm talking about stuff that's much more important, more than just words, a couple words we don't like. I'm talking very specifically here, locally, where we've had physical accosting, physical intimidation of elected officials. We've had frivolous complaints, multiple lawsuits, those cost time, energy, money. And frankly, it discourages good people, not just now, but in the future, from wanting to run and to serve in our community. And I know some people said, well, if you can't get the heat, get out of the kitchen. That's almost always by people who have never served one minute in public office or actually had to make real decisions. And so, with that, actually, last December, at the first of many, many, many meetings that cost thousands, I'm sure tens of thousands of dollars for the taxpayers and some of us who were challenged, really frivolous petition challenges, Mayor, former Mayor Jesse Smart, who spent 12 years as mayor, eight years as a city councilman, was at the first of these meetings. And one of the things that he said to me, he said, in my 20 years in City Hall, I have never seen such nastiness and viciousness in my entire life, in my entire political career. I haven't seen that. And my response was, Jesse, welcome to our world. And with that, I don't know what we can do, right, moving forward. But the thing that I do know is, we're human beings, so therefore, we're imperfect. And so, therefore, we can do more, and we can do better things. And the first thing that I can do as mayor, and I hope all of you will join me, I want to thank my colleagues up here. Because unlike, all nine of the people who are standing up here have stuck their neck out on the line, they've gotten elected, they are making tough decisions, excuse me, whether we agree or we don't, and we're not going to agree, we're human, right? So, we're not going to agree. That's the whole nature of public policy decision-making. And so, regardless of our agreement, we have stepped forward. This council has made responsible decisions for providing critical services for the nearly 80,000 people in our city, for hundreds of thousands of people who come through this community every year, and for providing policy leadership and administrative leadership for a $215 million a year budget. It's easy to sit on the sidelines and throw proverbial bombs. It's easy to sit on the sidelines and make up frankly, lies, things that aren't true. But we've had a city council who has done great things, and I want to stand up and give a standing ovation to my city council. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And that's all I have to say.
So I just wanted to say, I'm completely changed the subject. At the firefighter training that some of us were at on Friday, one of the things that was.
Saturday.
Saturday? Thank you. I got melted a little bit while I was there, no. One of the things that shocked me was how fast a fire will destroy a room, right? I mean, they gave us a demonstration, and it was, you know, the smoke alarm went off at a minute and a half, and two minutes later, the room was mostly completely destroyed. The first thing, I don't know about the rest of you guys, but the first thing I did is went home and checked all of my smoke detectors in the house, you know? And so, I would encourage all of you guys this week, this is probably a good time, Fire Prevention Week, to go through your house. We got a statistic, like 50 percent of people who died in home fires was because they had taken the battery out, because it was annoying them, the chirping was annoying them. So go through your house, put fresh batteries in your alarms, just check them all and make sure you're safe. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman.
Thank you. I also participated in fire ops, and I can attest to what Jamie said. It was a very interesting experience, and it was actually, it was really hard, you know, to go through what firefighters have to go through, especially noting that it was a day that was relatively cool compared to others. So we can imagine, you know, try to imagine them having to put on the suit and all their gear in the summer when it's about 100 and plus degrees. I mean, it was, it was tough. It was really tough. So it really gave me a good sense of what they have to go through. And it takes a special person to be able to do that, because not everybody can. So we have to, you know, be really thankful for their service. You know, the funny thing about it, when I came home, my son said, Dad, you smell like hot dogs. I was like, oh, okay, thanks.
If you want that, I still have my fire ops from two years ago. I have my hat. You smell it, it still smells like hot dogs.
It does, yeah, yeah. It's very interesting. The other thing that I wanted to mention for the council's benefit, Alderwoman Painter and myself were asked to participate with, you know, the Scott Commission, and they've put together a work group to work on, you know, the bylaws and the trust document, to kind of clean that up and make sure that those two documents are in sync with one another. So it's been a pretty interesting process. You know, we've learned quite a bit about it. And we were pretty clear throughout the process that, you know, we're not there representing the council as a whole. They were really just trying to get a sense of, you know, what does this sound like to you, you know, from your perspective as an individual Alderman? And that's why we try to, we try to make sure that they, you know, we gave them that perspective. Let's see. So, you know, a couple of things of note is that the group has been very intentional about preserving the integrity of the trust document, because it was, you know, it's all based on the Judge Scott's will. So they wanted to be sure that the integrity was preserved. But the other thing too, was to preserve the role of the trustees as well. So, you know, throughout the document, you'll see that it's, you know, it's kind of sprinkled throughout to make sure that, you know, our role is preserved, and they, you know, always seek, you know, the feedback of the council, you know, before, or the trustees before making decisions. So I was very pleased with that. And then, moving forward, so you should expect within the next month and a half or so, you know, to see those documents, you know, once they've reached what they think is a final, final draft. And so, you can provide your feedback as a whole. And the overriding factor is the fact that with David's impending departure, I want to make sure that the, you know, we can kind of push that through at that time. That way, we have somebody who's been involved in all the discussions, and it doesn't go into, doesn't go to somebody who doesn't really know, you know, what happened, and has to kind of start over again. So that's kind of the general idea with that. Did I miss anything?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Very good.
Good. So, that's it.
Thank you.
This is the most I've ever talked. I'm exhausted.
Actually, it's not. Thank you. Yeah, no, fire ops has certainly been, and I've stolen, this is before fire ops, something that Alderman Sage has said, and I'm sure at least once or more, I've done it without total attribution. But he said, you know, these are the people who go in when we're running out. And it gives you a greater appreciation for that. Alderwoman, how many? I think you get the last word.
No.
Oh, no.
My colleague did it, yeah. Thanks, Mboka, for sharing what's being done outside of city council concerning the Scott Commission. I was wondering where we were with that, and appreciate hearing. I know we're all involved in other things related to the city, and it's good to hear what's happening. I appreciate the opportunity to attend IML at the end of September, and I shared some of my notes with folks here. It's held every year, and I would encourage other folks to attend. It's usually the third weekend, September, in Chicago. I mean, if nothing else, you get to go to Chicago. So that's, that's pretty cool. One of the things I did learn, Mr. Jurgens and his colleagues had the most interactive of the sessions. A lot of the synopsis said, "interactive session." And the most interaction I got was fidgeting. So it was, it was a good opportunity to learn and learn that we're actually doing most things right. So that was in terms of IML, or in terms of OMA and FOIA requests, so that was cool. As Union President Mattson shared earlier, yeah, and as everybody, other people have spoken, we did attend, some of us did attend fire ops. The city provided the facility, but the union covered all the other expenses, the hats and the equipment and the, so the union firefighters and their spouses donated their time. They were, they were working without any pay on Saturday, and all the time before that to coordinate the effort. And man, I'm sure glad I don't weigh 40 pounds more than I do, because of that equipment. It's like, oh my gosh, just trying to walk across the grass and get your feet up, and so it was really kind of, yeah, it does, does make me feel even. it was really kind of, yeah, it does just make me feel even prouder of our fire department and what they do for us on a daily basis, and our police department too. I mean, public safety is certainly a concern for all of us, and I think we have really stellar folks keeping us safe. So, with that, bye.
Thank you. Alderwoman Bray.
I too wanted to echo the sentiments. We've heard here tonight about fire ops. Local union, Local 49 did an amazing job putting that event on, and it was certainly a day of learning, and we focused on the broad range of skills and abilities that our firefighters bring to bear, and I just think it's right and fitting that this Fire Prevention Week that we all thank a firefighter. So, a thank you to the local union, and I encourage you all to thank them as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Hellman. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.